Thank you again for staying. If you're new, my name's Samantha Scholes. I'm with the Mount Vernon News. I'm here tonight with my partners Marty Tracy with Knoxpages.com and Tyler Mathias with WQIO WMVO. We're going to go ahead and move forward with the Commissioner Debate. Please welcome Mary Chappa and Tom Collier.
Ms. Chappa, would you like to start our opening statements?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for coming out this evening to participate in your local government, and thank you to the sponsors for providing this opportunity. I grew up and graduated from Mount Vernon, grew up in and graduated from Mount Vernon, the daughter of local schoolteachers. I went on to earn my bachelor's in psychology from Bowling Green State University where I supervised overnight operations at the Crisis Center in Wood County. I then earned my masters in clinical psychology from Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania and started working as a therapist in psychiatric residential treatment facilities and worked in community-based programs for youth. Currently, I work at New Hope Industries in the Community Employment Department where I am apprised of the local job market and economy. This professional experience has allowed me to work within the community and with other agencies and county departments such as the court systems, police, probation, et cetera, as well as local businesses. I gained experience with large budgets and learned how crucial it is to be politically active in order to truly serve others, to aid the underprivileged, and provide healthy vibrant communities to all citizens. I have dedicated myself to public service for the past 15 years and I am running for office so I can continue to serve the public. I am running because every voice deserves to be represented. I am running because citizens should be able to easily participate in their government and citizens should never have to guess where their hard-earned tax dollars go or why their tax dollars are going towards certain projects or positions. Whenever one party holds a monopoly in the office, in one office, be it left or right, it tends to create imbalance. We need fresh eyes in the Commissioner's Office. We need transparency, accountability, and accessibility. We need someone proactive and engaging who will dedicate themselves full-time without conflicts of interest to the position, and I believe that person is me.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
Thank you very much, and again, I want to thank the Mount Vernon News, Knoxpages, and WMVO, WQIO for this opportunity, and all those who turned out this evening. It's a pleasure to be here, and we are fortunate to have active local media. I have two daughters and the father of two daughters, beautiful daughters, that are 17, soon to be 17, and 22. I currently serve as the Knox County Commissioner. I've been self-employed primarily in the real estate, property management, and property maintenance businesses over the last 30-plus years. I previously served on Mount Vernon City Council and as a state representative for this district. I've been extremely involved over the past 30-plus years in a number of volunteer organizations as well, including the Exchange Club at the local, state, national, regional level, as well as Toastmasters, Christian Star Academy, the Cancer Society, and a number of other nonprofit groups throughout our community. I too am blessed to have been born and raised in Knox County, the youngest of nine children, and I'm honored to have had the honor to serve the people of Knox County and to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question this evening. The Commissioners release their meeting schedules to the press each Monday and Thursday. The daily agenda does not include when votes will be taken and on what measures. That information comes out when meeting minutes are released at a later date. What more can the Board of Commissioners do to provide additional transparency to the media and the public on a more timely basis? Mr. Collier?
Thank you. That's a good question. The Commissioners do meet for public hearings on Mondays and Thursdays. We generally start at 10:00 and finish at the end of whatever business needs to be transacted that day, but generally around 4:00. Business can be transacted at any time during that public meeting because it has been announced and open to the public. It's not always possible to determine what decisions will be made and in what timeframes. We do try to list every person who we know has either asked to be on the agenda or to have specific time given, and so we publicize that to the local media and anyone who requests that information. But because of the open-door policy that has been in the Commissioner's Office for years and years, you know, we never know who's going to walk in or when. And also, the clerk will bring up things as they come in. If an email comes in and we need to take some action or a resolution is to be had, those are taking action as soon as it's viable and feasible. So it is difficult. We certainly know intentions to hide anything of decisions, but literally the nature of our job would require that if somebody wanted to be there for votes, they'd pretty much have to be there at any time we're in public session.
Thank you. Ms. Chappa?
I believe that the agenda needs to be much more detailed and adhered to because the average person, if they want to participate in their local government, doesn't have the opportunity to just take off a day of work and show up around 10:00 and hope to be able to speak with who they want to. I think it should be much more detailed so that people can be a part of their government. I believe there should be evening meetings as well, and I think agendas need to be published a week ahead of time, online and in the paper.
Any rebuttal?
I'd like to just state, again, I want to be very clear that people can talk with the Commissioners anytime, anywhere, and we are available and do so. Formal action can only be taken during our publicized timeframes of those days on Mondays and Thursdays. We do attend lots of meetings outside of that timeframe. We welcome the public at any time that's convenient for them, and you know, it's not like a city council or something that has a set agenda and you go through and vote on a number of issues. It's more of an administrative type of position, and it requires some flexibility, and it's just, it would be nearly, would be impossible to publicize everything a week. It's even difficult to do it even a day in advance, but we try to make the media particularly aware of whatever is coming up.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up on transparency. Should job openings be posted regardless of whether or not it's required? Mr. Collier?
Well, that's a good question that I know has been raised. I think, you know, referring particularly to a recent position that was filled, while we often publicize those types of positions, there are people hired throughout the county in all offices on a regular basis who may or may not advertise those positions, but it would not be like, unlike a business locally, the Mount Vernon News perhaps, if they were hiring an editor, whether they choose to advertise that or hire it from within or hire it from somebody that they know is a good candidate, if they were hiring an editor or any other position in a key leadership position. Those are business decisions. I think people elect public officials to make those decisions. That's why we're a republic, and certainly, we can be criticized for our decisions at any time, and are, but I would stand by our decisions when we hire and try to attract the right people. But anytime we have an opportunity to get somebody that's highly qualified and is available, we're going to take that opportunity.
Are you trying to tell me that I'm going to be replaced, Mr. Collier?
No, no. I'm thinking of the past, not the future.
Ms. Chappa?
I believe just for the sake of good government and good practice that it should be made public, and that other community members could be given the chance to have that opportunity. That being said, I know back in 2012, Mr. Collier stated to the news that they were going to work on a system or process in place for hiring and firing, and I am curious to know if that has happened within the last four years. That's all.
The county Commissioners have supported the Knox Substance Abuse Action Team, or KSAT, in its efforts to bring awareness of the substance abuse issue in our community. Specifically, what can county government do, if anything, to reach children before they start experimenting with drugs? And would you support providing funds so that the DARE program, for example, could be put back in the schools by the Sheriff's Department? And Ms. Chappa, go first.
That is definitely a big issue, and the younger we reach children, the better off the outcome is going to be. I don't know if I would put funds into the DARE program, per se. I think we need to have programs that are very much into the community, to have workers that are going into homes and speaking with families and looking at the family as a unit to solve these problems.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you. There's no doubt that drugs are a huge issue, not only in our community, but around the country. You know, there are, there's no one simple answer or way to address the problem. There's education, which is certainly important. There's enforcement, legal law, which is very important. There's the punishment, there's the crime, the trial, and the incarceration of those individuals. There are so many aspects that play in, but we have a social issue that we're dealing with in the drug problem. I am proud to say that the county Commissioners have funded additional people at the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Schaefer, who's here tonight, does an excellent job with the limited staff that he has, as does the Police Department and their staff, but you can't do it all in that fashion. We did provide funding for an additional detective, who his primary responsibility would be with the drug enforcement. Unfortunately, filling that position, as with many other positions, is very difficult, and so the sheriff and I know the Chief of Police are doing all that they can, and we're there to support them in any way that we can as well.
Rebuttal?
I believe that probation officers are very, are imperative in dealing with this issue also. That a detective is important, but I think we need to be putting our money into forming those one-on-one relationships with our community members, our fellow citizens that need our help.
These are two separate questions here. First for Tom. What are your biggest accomplishments, and how do they affect the bigger picture?
Sure. I think when I ran for this office four years ago, there were three things that I said were important to me. One was infrastructure and technology. That infrastructure including the county buildings and grounds and infrastructure that we oversee, fiscal responsibility, and accessibility and quality of life. Along the lines of the infrastructure, we have made major improvements in our IT at the county level, as well as security for the county buildings, for all those who come and go, not just the public, but also the elected officials and the people who, the hundreds of people who work in county buildings. For fiscal responsibility, we have balanced the budget every year. In addition, we've actually made strides to build back up some reserves, both in our insurance fund as well as in the general fund, to give us a little bit of breathing room, which has been very good, and I will add that we did that in spite of some significant cuts from the state level since I've been there. So I think there are a number of things, and I'd be glad to list them when we have a little more time pending, of the things that we have accomplished in the Commissioner's Office in the past four years as I've been there.
All right. Ms. Chappa, when you look at the county over the past few years, what do you feel is the state of the county areas needing improvement, and name some of your specific plans to improve the areas that you may identify?
Let's see. Over the past couple of years, I think there have been certain neighborhoods in the county that have lost their value, their property value, due to the drug epidemic, and focusing on that, finding funding and sources and creating programs to work with those individuals that are dealing with that, and also the economy. We need to have jobs, and we need to have, we need more small businesses in town also.
All right. Any rebuttal?
No.
The county prosecutor has alluded to the fact that he could use an additional prosecutor. The probability is high that more funds need to be funneled into the public defender's office, and recently, the juvenile court judge has asked the Commissioners for funding to pay guardian ad litem. These are just some items that have popped up from the judicial system. How do you plan to keep spending under control while adding these necessary extras? Ms. Chappa?
Well, I would be seeking the advice of many other individuals. I would be going to other counties also and talking with their Commissioners to see how they handle balancing those issues. It's definitely a priority that we have a good court system and legal system up and running, and funding is scarce, so I would have to be doing some research into that.
Mr. Collier?
Under the general fund, we fund about two dozen different departments, and under the non-general fund, we support or provide in portion for probably three dozen or more. Very few, if any, of those have not asked for more resources to do more things. Certainly, the public defender's off, excuse me, the public defender and the prosecutor's office have asked for additional funding over the years, as have the courts, primarily for the same purpose, as we're overwhelmed once again with the drug epidemic and the effects of that on county government. It's very expensive in every aspect of that. It's expensive to find those people, it's expensive to arrest them, it's expensive to house them, it's expensive to cite them, to prosecute them. All of those things are very expensive. We have had conversations about a drug court, and I'm sure we'll be having that with the incoming judges, and that will require some additional funding, probably for both the prosecutors and the public defenders and all, but we have to make sure that that's a cohesive effort. You can't have one without the other, and so if we have more prosecutions, the court has to be able to handle them, and if the court can handle them, you might have to make sure that they can be prosecuted and housed. So it's a multi-pronged issue, and we have done that in small ways. We'll be doing it in more ways, but we will keep a balanced budget because we're required to and because we always have.
Any rebuttal? Thank you. Federal regulators have ordered the state of Ohio to discontinue a sales tax imposed in 2009 on services performed by Medicaid managed care organizations. The change will hit counties pretty hard, including Knox County, to the tune of $500,000 in 2018, or that's the prediction. How will you trim the budget to offset this lack of funds? Mr. Collier?
Once again, every time we talk about the budget, you know, we, we have, and I'm going back further than when I was a Commissioner, but the Commissioner Board has weathered the storm of more than a million dollars lost in revenues on investments. They've weathered the storm on millions of dollars lost through local government funds, and we will weather the storm of a half a million dollars lost through that particular sales tax. It's not easy, and to say that there is one particular area, certainly, we have to look at those few items that are nondiscretionary versus those that are discretionary, but even that becomes difficult, because everything that the county government does affects somebody, and it's important to somebody, and there's reasons for it. And so, we try to keep the expenses low and to make sure that our efficiencies are high, and that's been the way we've been successful without making major cuts, with the exception of 2009, when there were 20% cuts across the board. We've been able to maintain and manage through efficiencies, and we hope to continue to do that.
Ms. Chappa?
I would have to take a much closer look at the funding, and I am confident, though, that my skills in education, in research and statistics, would help me be able to look at that and maybe be a little creative in solving, solving some of the funding issues, that I might be able to look at things a little bit differently.
Okay. Thank you.
Describe what financial picture you would like to see after the next term. What is or should Knox County look like in 10 years? And Ms. Chappa, you can start.
I would like to see us continue to develop our parks and develop activities for people to participate in, leisure activities that are relatively cheap, especially for children and youth to be able, to be active in their community. I would like to see maybe a 30-bed drug and alcohol facility. I'd like to see maybe a 30-bed mental health facility also. I think our county is struggling with providing mental health services, and I would like to see that change in the next 10 years.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you. What a great opportunity and lead-in, you know. Living in Knox County all my life and seeing the progress and the ups and downs of our local community, you know, as I compiled a short list of some of the things that we've done just in the last few years, and I say "we" because I speak on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I've often said there's, there may be two I's in Commissioner, but there's no I in Board, and we're part of the Commissioners Board, and we work together. And while we have put a number of resources into the parks, we've had a great working relationship with the county parks, the trails, a number of community partnerships that we've, that we've enjoyed, you know, we've had great renovations to this building, including the elevator and updated handicap access for restrooms and better access to all levels of this building. We built a new engineer's office in conjunction with the county engineer. We've had consolidation with 911. We brought the Knox Area Transit under the county Commissioners. Again, we've balanced the budget. We've had security upgrades. We've upgraded to the Marx radio systems throughout the county for fire, police, and EMS with the Marx radios. We've bought new voting machines for all of our, you'll notice that when you go in to vote this year, if you haven't already, the eBooks and the voting machines, and provided land for future expansion of the county facilities. And we've done all of that without increasing any taxes while still balancing the budget and while being more efficient day by day.
Any rebuttal?
I would like to also see, within the next 10 years, I would like to see our universities, our colleges and universities expand. I want to see more small business downtown, and I would like to see more jobs come to Mount Vernon. I think we can build on the expansion that's coming from Columbus, as it always has.
The county owns at least 100 parcels of land, and Mr. Collier, you probably know that number, but what can be done to better manage the purchasing and use of property by the Board of Commissioners? We'll start with you, Mr. Collier.
Well, what could be done to improve assumes that we're not doing something well now, and I'm not sure what that is, but I think we've been good stewards, not only of our monetary resources, but I think we've been good stewards of all of our assets. You know, the county has more than two dozen buildings. We insure over $110 million worth of assets. We have over 135 vehicles and trailers. We provide resources, benefits, safety, housing, and other resources for dozens of agencies and elected and appointed officers and officials. We oversee a lot of assets throughout the county. I think we've been very judicious in when we've acquired land and the seldom opportunities that we would have to sell or gift land. I think we've been good stewards of that, and I think we can always do more to, you know, again, be more efficient, to be more transparent, and, you know, to, I think most of all, to have our vision clear as to what will be the growth of the county and the county government, so that we know and anticipate and project what our needs will be for the future.
Thank you. Ms. Chappa?
Could you repeat the question?
The county owns at least 100 parcels of land. What can be done to better manage the purchasing and use of properties by the Board of Commissioners?
One thing I think that I, that could change is if I'm elected, there will be no conflict of interest between me and any other companies that are, or agencies that the Commissioners do business with regarding land and real estate. I, that's a principle that I believe in. I believe that that is ethically correct and makes for a transparent government.
Any rebuttal, Mr. Collier?
Nope.
If elected, what will you do to work with our state legislators or elected officials to reduce or remove unfunded mandates, there's that word again, that continue to drain the county's general fund? And Ms. Chappa goes first.
Well, I would work on building those relationships, and I have to say that I would have to know more to answer that question adequately.
Mr. Collier?
You know, I served in the legislature from 2000 to 2008. I don't remember any unfunded mandates then. Obviously, that's, that is an issue, and I think a lot of that goes back to, sometimes to unintended consequences of legislation, but I think primarily, it's a good working relationship with county and local elected officials, with their state representatives, and explaining to them, and hopefully, they have a good background, some of them do and some of them do not, in local government, and that they can better understand what's meant with unfunded mandates. Sometimes in Columbus, I think that mantra gets old, and people hear it all the time and think, well, you know, you've got to fund something on your own, and, but I think that many legislators perhaps lose sight of what is involved in implementation of, of the bills that are passed through the legislature and the funding streams that come along. And I believe most times, it's probably an unintended consequence, but that's why we have a County Commissioners Association of Ohio, and that's why we're an active part of that group, to be able to educate our legislators, both at the state and federal level. I've had the opportunity to do both of those things, and to educate them on what our job entails and where the difficulties lie for local governments, and how we can better implement the ideas that they're, the concepts they're trying to propose in legislation without harming the local governments.
Thank you.
What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? And we'll start with Mr. Collier.
Well, you know, we have, as was mentioned, we have several dozen buildings that we maintain, and some of those are very old. The building that we're sitting in, I think we all could say has been well-maintained and updated and is enjoyed by the community for a variety of events. There are other things, like the hospital that I was born in across the street that I now work in as a county office, you know, we have elevators in there that, you know, date back as old, as older, older than I am, and we're going to have to update those types of things. I think as we look at the needs of our elected officials, I know that we're looking at, and through Matthew Kurtz and Job and Family Services, expansion of the center out on Columbus, or excuse me, on Coshockton Avenue, the Children's Connection there. You know, we're looking at a number of things like Wally Road and the improvements on Wally Road for economic benefits that that produces in that end of the county. There are a number of infrastructure things that we can, can put our sights on and work with the county engineer and with other agencies in the county to make sure that we have everything that they need for the, for the future.
Ms. Chappa?
I would definitely be speaking with the county engineer and getting feedback. I would also be going out and speaking to citizens to see what they have concerns about. Some things that I have heard from citizens are bridges and the water system that are their concerns.
Any rebuttal?
I just mentioned that, you know, the bridges and roads are the duties of the county engineer, and we do work closely with him, but I know a lot of people think that the Commissioners oversee that. We don't directly. That is, does come through the engineer. But the other thing that I failed to mention, and I will now, is solar as an option for alternative energies. We are looking at a major solar energy project that will come at no cost to the county, that will help us save thousands of dollars potentially if we qualify and earn that grant, thousands of dollars a month in energy savings. So those are the types of things that we need to look to towards the future, and we are looking at.
Thank you. We've talked about some budgeting issues already, and even the possibility of funding a return of DARE. I'd like to talk a little bit about another valuable asset to our community, the OSU Extension and 4H. How committed are you to funding the Extension Office and the programs that shape our future leaders and why? Ms. Chappa?
I think programs for youth are imperative, especially if we want to have a strong community, and farming is so important for Knox County, and 4H affects so many individuals, and 4H affects so many families, and it's something that children can do to develop their skills and also be able to learn those skills to, when they grow up, they can continue to farm, because you're always going to need farmers.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
Thank you. OSU Extension has been vital for Knox County, but I want to put that in perspective. We spend, from the county funds, $250,000 a year for OSU Extension. in perspective. We spend, from the county funds, $250,000 a year for OSU Extension. Some would say that's not enough. For perspective, I'd like to say, the last time we looked, Morrow County spends $5,000 on OSU Extension. Coshockton County spends $20,000. Ashland County spends less than $50,000. We, in Knox County, spend $250,000 that we invest in OSU Extension. We invest that because it is important. We invest that because it's a vital service to our farmers and to our community as a whole. It's education, it's outreach, it's support, and it's help. So, you know, I think to ask about our commitment, we have made commitments to OSU Extension. It is important to us. But I think you'd be hard-pressed to find another county anywhere near our size that spends as much or invests as much in county extension as we do in Knox.
Any rebuttal?
No.
We've run out of our questions, but I just thought of one. Oh, Samantha has one. She's always prepared. Okay. What can the county commissioners do to encourage building and development here in the county? What incentives can be offered to businesses? And I guess I just added that, you know, what is the role of the commissioners in doing that? Ms. Chappa?
Um, being involved in the local boards, development committees, that would be another thing that I would have to research and network with. And I would want to see what other counties are doing. I know Delaware County is expanding quite a bit, and I would be interested in speaking with their commissioners.
Mr. Collier?
Thank you. We do participate in that. We are a part of and on the board of the Area Development Foundation, who is the primary function, or one of the primary functions of that group, is to seek out, encourage, and work with potential business partners for growth, expansion to our area or in our area. And we will continue to work with them. We also work with them on not only the initial placement of any tax incentives that might be available, but we also review those on a regular basis to make sure that those who have received benefit or tax abatement are following and abiding by the guidelines that were set up, that they've met the benchmarks that they promised, and that those tax dollars are being used in the proper way, or the, the lack of paying those tax dollars for a period of time. Those abatements generally are short-term for the business. They're small. And we do make sure that, in Knox County, which is unlike many other counties, we hold not only the schools, all the public school districts harmless, but we also make sure that the Career Center itself is held harmless from any of those abatements. So, I think we go over and above in Knox County. Certainly, we would love to do more. And we have a great director at ADF. Jeff is doing a fantastic job. And I think we're going to see more and more growth and development coming our way.
All right. Whatever mounting pressure to do more with less, is there any part of the county budget that can or should be shielded from cuts? If so, what areas and why? And Ms. Chappa can start.
Hmm. I think that's a tough question, because funding is so limited to begin with. I would really have to do pros and cons as to what I would cut.
Mr. Collier?
You know, cutting can be difficult. And, you know, when you say, you know, what areas could be trimmed or cut back, depends on who you ask. Behind every dollar sign on a budget sheet are names and faces, people who receive services or people who provide services. And those services become important. And, you know, there are few areas, I won't say there are none, but there are few areas, A, that are discretionary, in other words, that we don't have to fund or fund to a certain level. And those that do, or those that are discretionary, still are vital and important. You know, OSU Extension was mentioned as one of those. We have made a huge commitment to OSU Extension and have continued that commitment, and it's grown. But that is one of the areas of discretionary funding. It's not something we have to do. It's something we do. And so, I'm not saying that that one should be cut or will be cut by any means, but it gives you the type of impact of what types of things are discretionary but are still vital and important. And so, we have to make those decisions very, very judiciously. But most of all, I will go back to my statement of what I think makes this board and previous boards successful in Knox County is, we have made cuts by being more efficient. And that's a key.
Thank you.
I think our last question will be at this, and it's, it's really kind of a down-the-road picture, probably, more likely. Is there any reason where you could foresee the need for a countywide levy or an increase in sales tax? Mr. Collier?
Thank you. The, the state gives some leeway to the county governments to present sales tax. We have what's called a piggyback tax. The, the state has a base amount, and then the counties have a limited amount that they can add to. I will note that Knox County is at or below, in our county sales tax, all the surrounding counties. We've, we've maintained that. And we have only, I believe, one penny left of sales tax that we ever could impose. This Board of Commissioners has been very staunch in the fact that we don't want to implement that unless it was a last resort. And we have not reached that. We don't foresee that. But, you know, that option is available to us. But again, I say kudos not only to this board, but to previous boards who made wise decisions that we haven't had to look at that. Other counties have. And I think that the citizens of Knox County benefit greatly by the fact that we pay less sales tax than our surrounding neighboring counties.
Thank you. Ms. Chappa?
Well, nobody likes to hear that their taxes might go up. But I think with inflation and the way the economy is, I think it's going to be inevitable at some point in time. I don't know what exactly it would be or when that would happen. But I just think that's reality.
Any rebuttal?
No, I'd just note, since we have an audience and a listening audience, that any time somebody buys a major purchase, a boat, a car, motorcycle, something out of town, make sure that you say you're a resident of Knox County and you insist on paying Knox County sales tax, because that money does come back to the county, the piggyback portion, and that comes back. And you will pay less than if they charge you their rate. And sometimes they say, well, that's an automatic. It's not. We've seen many times, even in mail-order types of things, where they just charge a general rate or the Franklin County rate, because that's what they look up. They don't charge the Knox County rate. And you want to make sure you're paying the Knox County rate, because you'll pay less and we'll gain more.
Thank you. I think we can move on to our closing statements. Mr. Collier, you have two minutes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to, again, thank the Mount Vernon News, Knox Pages, and WMVO, WQIO, and to all those who are participating tonight and those who are watching. Again, my name is Tom Collier. I am currently the county commissioner in Knox County, one of three. I am on the ballot in November, and I would appreciate your support. We've done a number of good things. We work together well, not only within our board, but we work well with neighboring counties and their commissioners. We work well with the other elected officials. And I think we have good things happening in our county. I think we've been able to weather some difficult storms, and we will continue to do so. And I'd appreciate your support for me this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chappa?
In a 2012 interview by the Mount Vernon News, Mr. Collier stated that commissioners need to account for every dollar and to make sure that there's open and accessible information so that we all know our dollars are being handled to the best possible way. The Mount Vernon News reported this past May that a project on East Chestnut Street was done without spending being itemized and recorded. I believe there was a definite conflict of interest between Mr. Collier's public service and his private sector profession, and that possibly the revised code 30786 was not followed, since the project did not go out to bid and it was estimated to be over $50,000. In 2012, Mr. Collier also stated that a goal of a commissioner is to make sure all agencies are working together. He also stated that we, meaning commissioners, need to make sure we have a system in place, process in place for hiring and firing. Given agencies in the community were surprised and unaware of the new 911 administration position, it does not appear that Mr. Collier has kept this promise, and it is unknown if there has been a formal hiring process created in the past four years. As commissioner, I will hold weekly evening meetings. I will livestream meetings. I will set meeting agendas and follow them. These agendas will be made available to the public a week ahead of time and by being published online and in the newspaper. I will update the commissioner's site online and make it more efficient for citizens to contact commissioners and participate in their government, to know what's going on in their community. I will continue to reach out across the state and utilize my research and networking skills to problem-solve for our community. I will always be transparent and inclusive, inclusive of other agencies and elected officials. I believe in a government that works together, that politicians are to represent and not to rule. Elect me and you can expect more transparency, community outreach, agency cooperation, and active, full-time leadership. And I want to thank you all for coming, and thank you for our sponsors.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for our candidates?